Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone in the room and welcome at home. Today is Wednesday, May 25th. It's right about seven, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Bangor School Committee. If you could please rise for the pledge.
To the flag, United States of America. To the flag, it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And if I may, I would like us to pause and observe a moment of silence for the 19 students and two teachers who lost their lives in the Robb Elementary School shooting in Uvalde, Texas yesterday. Thank you. This has undoubtedly been an extremely difficult day for our students, our parents, our families, and the entire Bangor School Department as we mourn the loss of lives of the victims following the horrible and senseless act of violence. We grieve with their families, their friends, and their entire community. On behalf of the school committee, I would like to thank all our brave teachers, staff, and administrators for having the courage to return to school today, help support our students cope while working through their own trauma and distress. You are unsung heroes. Thank you to Superintendent Tager for guiding us through this healing process. Thank you to the Bangor PD for their presence at our schools this week and giving us a sense of security and a level of support, an outlet for our grief. We will get through this together as always. Superintendent Tager, do you have a few words?
Yeah, just for the school committee, we did increase police presence today and that will continue. Chief Hathaway has been a very good partner for us, so you'll continue to see that on our campuses. Also, curriculum was provided for teachers at all grade levels. There's different conversations for students at different ages. By Kathy and we also had guidance counselors on their own send things out as well. I saw a really good document from James F. Dowdy today. So we are sharing resources for students to be able to talk, and that is a concern of ours after a pandemic of two years with hybrid and remote. And just to have significant adults that students can feel safe to talk to. And certainly, we encourage them to talk with their parents at home. We also, on our campuses, will have an increased district office presence. We will all be out at the schools ourselves. And if a principal is out, we will serve in their place for the remainder of the year. And we are all willing to do that. So that'd be Jerry, Kathy, Christie, and myself will be out at the schools more than normal. I would also tell you that we value our students' voices, our parents, faculty, and staff. One of the things with what happened in Texas, there was a post three days ago with two automatic weapons posted. And I feel like we have a very good community. We have been able to, to this point, catch things in advance. And because our students talk to us and they talk to our principals, they have good relationships with students. We've had tips from parents and faculty and staff. So I'm not going to tell you that we don't ever have issues that are concerning. We do, but I think the idea is to get people that will talk to you. And I think one of the things that we really encourage our faculty, staff, and principals to do is if we have somebody new in our students, because we do, in our campuses, because we do have a lot of mobility, to go up to somebody you don't know and talk to them. I think when students have somebody that they can associate with and feel comfortable with, they're less likely to do things that they should not do. We looked at our safety protocols again today. And I think that there's things that we could always improve as we see things that happen in other places. I'm not going to talk about our protocols at all. That's because they are our protocols. If you ever wanted to hear about that, that would be an executive session. Our principals have all communicated with their faculty and staff, whether it was in person or through emails. And they'll be continuing to do that during the week, too. This has been a lot for everybody to handle. It's not the way things are supposed to be. We did send out an alert today at noon, too. The three things that were highlighted were the police presence, the curriculum. And what I forgot to mention is our guidance and social workers are very available for any students, family members, or faculty and staff.
Thank you for the update. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Excellent. So, public comments. And as a reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence.
Hi, my name is Landon, Landon Micho. I come from 77 Stillwater Avenue. Thank you to the school committee for letting me speak today. A couple of years ago, I attempted suicide because of how bad my gender dysphoria was. I couldn't handle the fact that my shoulders were bigger and that I wanted the hair, it was growing out of my, and I wanted the hair to stop growing out of my face. Other trans students go through this every day. And yet, when I come here and talk about getting more trans inclusion in the school, I get a, I get a, we'll work on it. And the working on it has never seemed to happen. November is when I first came here to speak, and nothing has been done to help trans students since then. And the fact that I have had to come here since then and still nothing has been done is frankly, pretty bad. I shouldn't have to come here and share with you guys what I went through to get you guys to see how serious this is. You should want to help trans kids. So not only do I come here to ask today if we can get more trans-inclusive teachings in the school, especially in the subjects of health and history, so trans kids can know the correct ways to bind so they don't break their ribs, among other things. And I also ask again about the put, about working to push through the proposed gender support plan as what I've seen, as I would have been shown, does not account for trans students who, like me, didn't feel comfortable sharing what they were going through with staff and would feel a lot safer filling out a form talking about what their gender identity is. The school should be taking a proactive approach to trans students and their health and not waiting for them to come to the school. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have superintendent's proposals and updates. The first action item, local delegate to the MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly. Superintendent Tager.
The committee should nominate a local delegate and alternate to the MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly scheduled virtually for October 22nd, 2022 at 9:30 a.m. The Delegate Assembly is responsible for proposed constitution and bylaw changes and considers resolutions of the association. So we're looking to nominate a delegate and an alternate.
Do I have a nomination? Member Mendel.
Yeah, I nominate Tim Saret, who's expressed interest in this position. So that could be great.
Okay. All in favor?
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, and do we need to?
Six zero.
Six zero. Do we need to appoint an alternate?
We should, yes.
Any interest in that, our nomination? Member Saret? Is there any interest for an alternate? Member Luciano? Okay, all in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you both.
And then next, we have informational items. We have report of reassignments for school year 2022, 2023.
I'm reporting the following teacher reassignments for school year 2022, 2023. Cynthia Fish from special education teacher at Abraham Lincoln School to IEP compliance coordinator at Bangor Regional Program and multiple handicap regional program. Darrell Loring from special education teacher at James F. Dowdy to IEP compliance coordinator for the district. Robin Gagnar from grade three teacher at Downey School to grade two teacher at Downey School. Barbara Clulley from grade one teacher at Downey School to grade two teacher at Downey School. Sarah James from grade two teacher at Downey School to grade one teacher at Downey School. Jennifer Fournier from kindergarten teacher at Abraham Lincoln School to kindergarten teacher at 14th School for one school year.
Thank you. And next, we have report of resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignations for the school year 2022, 2023. Emma Jandro, speech pathologist, Downey School. Ellen Hall, science teacher, Bangor High School. Lisa Lower, school counselor, William S. Cohen School.
Thank you. Next, we have business action items. Action items, we have minutes from the regular meeting of May 11th, 2022.
I'm recommending approval of draft minutes of the May 11th, 2022 Regular School Committee meeting.
Can I get a motion, please? Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Next, we have financial report for March 22. Financial report.
I'm recommending approval of the March 2022 financial report.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Next, we have audited June 2021 financial report.
I'm recommending approval of the audited June 2021 financial report.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next, we have personnel nominations for teacher.
I'm recommending the following teacher nominations for the 2022, 2023 school year with a one-year probationary contract. Jill Kenny, school counselor, Bangor High School. Jenna Bishop, grade one teacher, Vine Street School.
Can I get a motion, please? Any discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Next, we have extra duty assignments for 2022, 2023.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 2022, 2023. Ashley Wollett, .5 fall varsity cheer coach, Bangor High School. Hope Wollett, .5 fall varsity cheer coach, Bangor High School. Ashley Wollett, .5 winter varsity cheer coach, Bangor High School. Hope Wollett, .5 winter varsity cheer coach, Bangor High School.
Get a motion, please. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
Next, we have second reading of a policy. And if it is okay, I'd like to take them all together? Yeah. Okay, so we have revised policy GDB 5 Lunch Aid Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 6 Executive Office Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 7 Support Staff Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 8 Adult and Community Education Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 9 Supplemental Compensation Guide, and revised policy GDB 10 Educational Technology Staff Compensation Guide.
I'm recommending second reading of the revised policies. Revised policy GDB 5 Lunch Aid Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 6 Executive Office Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 7 Support Staff Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 8 Adult and Community Education Compensation Guide, revised policy GDB 9 Supplemental Compensation Guide, and revised policy GDB 10 Educational Technology Staff Compensation Guide.
Motion, please. Any discussion on any one of them? All in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next, we have donations. And Member Sor, it's your turn to read them.
Yes. To Downey School from Bangor Federal Credit Union, a cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of $250. To the Downey School from Pine State Nutrition, nutritional teas for Teacher Appreciation Week having a total dollar value of $300. And to 14th Street School from the Bangor Federal Credit Union, a cash donation to support students having a total value of $250. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Can I get a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, moving right along to committee updates. But first, comments and questions from the committee. Member Luciano.
I just wanted to say a quick, I'm not sure if this is the right place doing it anyway. I'm not sure, or, okay, we'll start with the good part. Just a quick thank you to all of the PTO members that are involved with the schools. You guys make little magic happen all the time, so thank you. My question is, is there a way that we could leverage the different PTOs to help each other? I know that the various PTOs, especially among the lower elementary schools, are wildly different in what they're capable of doing. But I think there's a lot of opportunity to sort of bring that together in a way that can be really helpful. I don't know if it would be appropriate to maybe set up a small, I don't think committee is the thing, I don't know the things, advisory group, whichever one is the least work is good. But I'm kidding. But I was just curious if there was a way we could maybe find a way to work with them or help them with each other? Because I feel like there's so much good that happens at each one.
So you're looking at a time where they would all be able to gather and share ideas? Is that what you're saying?
Even just, I mean, in a perfect world, like, once a month, a member, like, one delegate from each group gets together? Right, exactly, to just, you know, what are we? They usually follow a similar schedule of events. And, you know, for instance, I know that today, I stopped by Abe Lincoln, and they were doing their fun run. And they had paper forms to fill out for donations. But over at Fruit Street, they have a website. And, you know, just that sort of thing where like, oh, they, okay, that we could do a website? I didn't know that. There's no reason, you know, so that kind of thing where I felt like it was a good chance to sort of maximize efficiencies.
So I've written down that you're requesting a way to leverage a PTO collaboration?
Yes.
Well, I guess what I'm going to ask is if any of the principals, I don't know, Lynn, if you or anybody else, has there been anything like this in the past that I wouldn't know of? Or do you have any ideas? I'm seeing some no's. I guess just a thought on the idea from a principal would be helpful for me, just for background knowledge.
I think we did try this once. I don't think it was really successful. We did, we did try to do it along the lines of, if I believe it was when we gained the laptops and trying to get the technology. I think maybe if it was, if they met a few times a year to share ideas, I think it would be a great idea to share the ideas, to share the processes. We do steal a lot of stuff from Fruit Street's PTO. We kind of watch. We have a teacher who has a child there. We get all your stuff. And they have a really, they do really have a great PTO, and so do we. But we do like their ideas. So I like that idea. We get it. I think, I think it would work out well. But we did try it once to try to get them to keep all their funds kind of together.
Yeah.
And, and then parse it out. And that didn't go very well.
I understand that. I know mixing money is different than mixing ideas.
Mixing ideas is good.
Totally get that. But, you know, even just creating a, like, a centralized document, location online, like a cloud where everybody can go grab resources.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I think you would find a lot of support for that.
Okay, I'd be happy to.
Does something you'd be interested in?
Yeah, I would love to help sort of forge that.
So how about if I put in my calendar for the beginning of next school year, we'll set up a beginning meeting and that group can kind of decide, you know, once a month, might be too often. I'm just, just saying. But I think the collaboration sounds like an idea to try.
Yeah, something.
I think it's a great, a great idea. I know.
Thanks.
We have parents who move on to Mary Snow. So we're, our PTO is in contact with the Mary Snow PTO. And we also have PTO members that reach out to Abe Lincoln. So there's like an informal.
That's what I've noticed.
Conversations going on. There's nothing truly formal.
Yeah.
I would do this. I would wait until the end of October. September is a busy month. We usually have one meeting, but it's usually followed with a volunteer.
Okay.
And if you want Superintendent Tager, I'll host the meeting.
Okay.
In our library.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Okay, great.
I think probably October, and you're looking at, if you, October, that takes care of the, kind of like the fall. Then January takes care of the winter. And then March would take care of the spring and what everybody's looking at.
Yeah, I think quarterly could be a totally reasonable, like, hour.
Because each school does their own little flavor.
Right, exactly.
On what works within their school building. But I think when you have the ability to share services, share ideas, from visiting artists, of visiting authors. I know there's been times, the PTOs have hooked up with visiting authors that they shared across the district. And I think that could be something we look at.
I think that'd be just, you know, especially because the way that, with the schools being so sort of intertwined anyway, it's so nice to be able to see, you know, when the kid moves across town and goes to a different school, that they're still going to get like, oh, our winter carnival's different here, or whatever, you know?
Yeah, and each school has those two or three.
Of course, right.
Kind of big family events.
Yeah.
I know Abe Lincoln, like, you had their fun, our fun runs tomorrow. And the money raised for our fun run will go towards a free spring fair event. So no one has to pay to come, so everybody can be family. So that's one of the things that we can definitely talk about in the fall.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Yep. So I'll put it on my calendar for September, Sarah, and then we'll shoot for an October meeting at Richard School, and we'll see if you can attend.
Sure, sounds good. Thanks.
Great idea, Member Luciano. Other comments? Member Saret and then Member Sprague.
Thank you. I also had an opportunity to visit the Abe Lincoln School today and see the fun run. Kids had a blast running around the adjacent park. Great fundraiser, I want to thank Mr. Pangburn, Principal Shaw, and the PTO from Abe Lincoln for all their hard work.
Member Sprague.
Thank you. In a previous meeting, I recognized Principal Chadbourne for receiving his doctorate. And then I noticed in a letter from Superintendent Tager that Principal Bannon also received his doctorate recently. So congratulations to Brian. And I would just say, coincidentally, Deanne was the principal at 14th Street School, and now Brian is the principal of 14th Street School. I have two kids at 14th Street School that are like openly antagonistic about the end of the school year coming. And they'd rather be in school, honestly, than summer vacation. And I think that's just wonderful, especially at that age. So thank you. It starts at the top, so we've had two great principals over there. I just want to thank and recognize you both. I do have another quick comment, too. Coincidentally, Karen Sichters and I, who are not here, co-chair the Bangor Rotary Club Scholarship Committee. And that committee don't, gives scholarships to students at seven different area high schools, including Bangor High School. And this year's Bangor High School recipients. And there's different guidelines for different categories of scholarships related to tech and trades and some other categories. And the three recipients from Bangor High School were Ryan Howard, Joey Morrison, and Simon Socolo. And it's a great trio of students. And it's coincidental that it's three male students, but actually, it's been overwhelmingly female nominees the last few years. So I think it's just the coincidence of the year. But three great choices, I think, and representatives in different ways of Bangor High School. So proud to co-chair that committee with Karen. And I think the amount of those awards is between $500 and $1,000 for each one. So we appreciate the guidance counselors at Bangor High School facilitating those awards for the Rotary Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Mendel.
Yeah, I just want to thank Landon again for coming one more time. And I, I just wanted to let you know, Landon, that I am going to meet with Mr. Tager and Dana Carver-Bialer to maybe talk about some of your concerns. I do know, like, the issue of chest binding, which you brought up, is a really huge issue for transitioning teens. And I think it's something that should be taught in health class. I'm, I doubt it is. But it can be very dangerous if it's not done correctly. So, so I would love to see that covered. And I also think, you know, I think Landon's request to kind of take a proactive approach to this is important because it is so very intimidating for kids to approach staff, even staff that they trust, about their gender identity. So I think the more proactive we can be in reaching out to kids, the better off they're going to be, so.
And I'd just like to echo that. Thank you, Landon. That takes a lot of courage to come up here and speak to us. And, you know, in the healthcare system, there's a big push for making sure that even all of our forms are indicating gender identity. So it's a nationwide push to do the right thing. So thank you. Other comments, questions? No? What about representatives' reports? Member Mendel.
The Mental Health Committee is meeting for its last meeting tomorrow at 3:15. And we're going to be reporting out, each committee, each working group is going to be reporting out to the whole committee and preparing for our presentation to school committee next meeting.
Excited to hear all about it.
Yeah, next meeting.
Anyone else? Okay. So Caroline, we would love to hear your student committee member update.
All right. So obviously, we're winding down at school, but we still have many events going on. And I've personally been very busy with standardized testing because juniors are doing math, English, and science standardized testing last week and this week. And also tomorrow, the fourth and fifth graders are coming up to the high school for a combined concert with the orchestra, band, and chorus. And it's going to be very exciting to expose them to that, that kind of art and music. And I know everyone in the music department is very excited to share with younger students. And also in the music department, the annual orchestra and chorus concerts will be happening on June 8th, which is also next school committee meeting. So I will not be there. This concert is going to be pretty exciting because chorus and orchestra are doing a combined piece together for the first time. And that's great to, like, cross different, you know, types of music. So that'll be interesting if people would like to attend. The ceremony for academic awards for underclassmen has been moved to May 31st at 6:00 p.m. So there will be a lot of students attending that. And the Humanities Academy will have a presentation night on June 6th at 6:00 p.m. And that's an opportunity for both pre-Capstone and Capstone students to present the research projects that they've been working on. And it's a really major event for all academy students. And I also would like to mention the Healing Hearts Project that's going on at the high school. So for months now, several clubs have had a collaborative effort in making fabric hearts. It's through this project that an artist came up with called the Healing Hearts Project, where basically, you make installations full of fabric hearts to show solidarity for something. Usually, it's for gun violence or something like that. But at the high school, we recently installed a, it's kind of like an art piece with, like, the world, and it's in the shape of a heart. And it's through the most, excuse me. The club that has had the most influence on that installation was the students ending environmental destruction. So they have a focus on environmental destruction and just recognizing, you know, places in the world that students would like to see improved or restored. And then on June 1st, the artist who came up with this project is going to Zoom with students, and the bigger installation will happen. And many clubs will attend, and it'll be nice. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that because it's a really nice effort.
Well, thank you. Lots of great work happening. Thank you. And I did want to ask just maybe Principal Butler about senior events and activities, if everything is on plan and in progress and everything looking good?
Everything is in progress. We had a communication out to senior families that included the calendar events and a little bit of an explanation of rationale and how events go. We've been in touch with the Cross Center. We've got the machinations for graduation set up. We always have good partnership with them. Our events leading in that what we call Senior Week are All Systems Go. Got alma mater march on the day after. The new version of baccalaureate, which is senior salute, where monitoring seniors and where building excitement. Our big theme in communication with seniors has been coming out to join, rejoin. There's been some hesitation. We had a great prom turnout. We had a lot of students who came early and stayed for a long time, which is a bit of a reverse of a trend. So I'm hoping that it'll be good, good involvement, good spirit as we close out the year for seniors.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited about everything.
Yeah.
We're excited about everything, yeah. Okay, I guess any final questions or comments? And just Superintendent Tager, I wanted to ask about the masking update, if you have any updates.
Sure, just, it's brief. We still are in red at Penobscot County, working closely with Dr. Martin. And she is, we spoke Friday, and she's very adamant that we wait until the color code changes. So in other words, follow CDC guidelines. Also, I meet with a pandemic team with the city, and the Health Department is on that committee. And we meet on Fridays, and they are in lockstep with us. So they're going to continue to do what, what we do, and we're going to continue to do what they do. So we're in a good partnership with the city. And, you know, we'll hope for, for green or yellow, but we're going to stick to what we said we would do.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, and informational items. So we've had to push our retreat because Superintendent Tager wasn't feeling well. So it will be this Friday, May 27th, 8:30 to 3:00. And the good news is that it's at Camp Jordan, so we're super excited about that. Wednesday, June 8, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m., Council Chambers. Monday, June 13, 2022, is our first reading of the school budget with City Council, 7:30 here in Council Chambers. Thursday, June 23, regular meeting, 7:00 p.m., Council Chambers. Monday, June 27, second reading of school budget with City Council, 7:30, Council Chambers. And Wednesday, July 20, 2022, regular meeting as well, 7:00 p.m. in Council Chambers. And adjournment. Any last questions? No? Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. And all in favor?
Passes six zero.